I'd like to introduce and welcome Michelle Weinsettle, who's the Senior Manager at Barry Dunn, who will introduce findings of the Public Safety Operational Review and Assessment. Actually, the journey toward this report started almost four years ago. The report reflects the first phase of the multi-phase assessment, which focuses on staffing models for Urbana Police and Fire Departments. And other phases will examine calls for service, alternative response models, and an action plan for implementation of alternative response models. I just wanted to say, like many communities around the country, 2020 marked a turning point for us here in Urbana. We faced a growing mental health crisis, unprecedented gun violence, increased stress of all levels related to COVID-19, and nationwide concern about citizen deaths related to police encounters. We realized there was a need to examine our own public safety response model here in Urbana. And we wanted to understand who's calling for service, why they are called, who is best equipped and trained to respond to these calls. We've adopted, we haven't taken a lot of steps since the 2020 killing of George Floyd. We adopted the 10 Shared Principles. That was led by NAACP President Minnie Pearson with community members and the Illinois Association of Police Chiefs. We rewrote the UPD's use-of-force policy with the NAACP, the ACLU, community members and our departments. We passed a structural resolution to end racism in Urbana. We had active bystandership for law enforcement training, ABLE training. We had stripped de-escalation training. We piloted a crisis co-responder team with a partnership between Rosecrantz and utilizing our own police officer, who also holds a master's in social work for follow-up response. And in early 2023, we initiated the comprehensive public safety review that we're going to hear about tonight. I wanted to thank the two city council members, Chandra Bishop, Jaya Colacetti, who served on the committee that helped interview and selected Barry Dunn as the firm. I want to thank all the city leadership in all departments, city employees, members of the community who provided input. This is the beginning of a very, of a long process that will transform our public safety response model. And Michelle will present findings tonight. We'll be happy to answer council members' questions. And again, this public discussion tonight is going to be the first of several. So this is, this is the introduction, and it's the beginning. Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And also, I just want to echo the fact that a number of you have said and thanked the people who came and provided comment, and that's great. It's, it's nice when people actually read your work. So I appreciate the fact that folks have done that and that people are very keenly interested, and rightly so, in, in the process and what's occurring. I believe that I will end up covering a lot of the questions that came up from, from folks that brought them forward. If not, I did make a few notes off to the side. And if I get to the end and I haven't covered those, I'll, I'll make sure that I circle back. And of course, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions also. I will just say that what you're going to see, I think everybody's aware this is a lengthy report. It takes a long time to read. It takes longer to write, which some of you can appreciate. What you're going to see is a very brief overview covering kind of typical high points of a process like this that we like to call out. And as I go through that, I will certainly, again, when you, if you have questions along, or any questions, I'm happy to answer for you. Just real quickly, we're, we're going to do through an agenda here. We'll talk a little bit about what we're doing, talk about the scope of the project. We will address the methodology for the review of both police and fire. We'll go into some key recommendations. And then, of course, at the end, as we've talked about, there will be an opportunity for questions. So when we think about the objectives of this project, and I do know that there was, I saw the circulation, or the little brief that was given out, I think in a meeting last night, summarizing certain points. Really, this is, this project has two primary elements to it. The first is a staffing study, looking at staffing needs and demands for the police and the fire departments specifically. Following that, it also includes, the next kind of section of it is looking at alternative response models and what that looks like. You can see in the slide here kind of the, the high-level points that are listed in our work plan with the city. And one of those is an essential calls-for-service review. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But at any rate, the, the next piece really following, after we go through the essential call-for-service review, is to look at alternative response in a broader sense. We cover some of this in the, in the report that's in front of you, but there will be obviously a deeper dive going into that going forward. So this section concerns staffing within the police department and specifically looking primarily at response staffing, which is generally patrol and investigations. So the first thing that we do when we, when we do a project of this nature, we're looking for good data. And we get data from a multitude of different places. We get data from the CAD or Computer-aided Dispatch System. I'll talk a little bit more of that, about that. We get data from RMS, which is the Records Management System, which is kind of a sister system, but not the same data. We get data from Uniform Crime Reporting or from FBI crime statistics. We get data from multiple other sources, including surveys of staff, various worksheets that we've, and instruments that we've created to collect very specific data related to staffing in terms of how we understand what it takes to staff response for, in a police agency. I want to just talk a little bit about the difference between CAD and RMS. We talk about CAD, that's the Computer-aided Dispatch System. This is, this, it comes from MetCAD. MetCAD is the communications center that provides all of the radio dispatching for, for the whole county, for Champaign County, but also for the police and the fire departments. CAD data effectively is every, any time someone calls dispatch, they create a CAD record. That information includes things like the date, the time, the origin of the call, where it was, the type of the call. And it includes a number of other things, like units sent, whether they're from the police department or from another police department, or any ambulance, or any other units that are sent to that. It has many different sections to it. So CAD data is kind of the beginning of where a lot of that data originates. RMS data, or records data, is a kind of a different set of data. It's a subset of that data typically. And there can be differences in CAD data versus records data, or RMS data, because not everything that comes, that starts in CAD ends up in RMS. And in some cases, in a lot of police departments, there are records that are added to RMS that never originate in CAD. So they come from different places. And the reason that's important is that even without, even within and throughout the report, there are sometimes discrepancies in certain data. And people may look at that and go, why doesn't this data match that data? A lot of it has to do with where the source of that data is. And it also has to do with who we're looking at as we create the data. One of the things that we do that's very important is look at comparison data from other studies that we've conducted. I, I have personally done approximately 30 or so of these studies all over the country in departments large and small. And we, we have to filter the data into similar formats so that we can cross compare with other organizations. And what that means is, for example, in your police department, we're looking at police patrol data, not necessarily patrol data, detectives, sergeants, deputy chiefs, and so on. So just understand that there will be times within the report where there may be some discrepancies about the data. And filtering is a key factor in isolating and analyzing the data. One of the things that, one of the things I want to point out is the workload model that we work from is what we call an obligated workload model. This is a national standard. In fact, Barry Dunn didn't come up with this. It is, it is considered the gold standard for how we understand what patrol resources are required to manage workload volumes. When we talk about this model, that it's a 30-30, 30-10 model. Thirty percent, no more than 30% of officers' time should be spent from the point of call, from the time dispatch calls them until the time they finish the call. We call that obligated workload. They're obligated to do something because someone summoned them. They've got a duty or responsibility that comes from being summoned to do that. The next 30% is what we call administrative workload. And those are things like filing reports, collecting evidence, bagging and tagging evidence, doing follow-up emails, in-service training, a whole host of other things. And the third, the third category is left over for officer discretion or uncommitted time. And we typically call that, we say it's 30, but effectively, that's where the other 10% resides as well, with an understanding that the way that, and the nature of the way policing and public safety works, that 10% may be shifted on a daily basis into one of those other categories. The reason that's important is, when we talk about obligated workload, this is workload that generates from the community. We're not talking about officer-initiated activity. So if we're talking about traffic stops or we're talking about other things that officers might initiate on their own, that is, that's in a different bucket. And that, that data, although it's important and it is work, that's not the obligated workload that we're trying to understand. So also, it's important to understand that within the construct of how we analyze data, we also separate the data effectively into three and a half categories: criminal, service, and traffic. And it's important, there's a distinction that's important. When we look at traffic data, when we're looking at traffic data from the community, that's not traffic stops. We're talking, we say traffic data, we're talking about somebody who called in a roadway hazard or a stop sign that was down, or something along those lines. When we say traffic in the, in the construct of community-initiated data, we're talking about somebody reporting a traffic condition. They might even be reporting a reckless driver. Traffic, when we talk about officer-initiated, is more about traffic stops or, or other things that they might do related to traffic. So just a couple of key distinctions there. It is important also to understand that we look at, we categorize certain things as criminal, which may or may not be reported through, like the FBI, as criminal incidents. Effectively, anything where someone could be charged, we consider that a criminal incident. So even if that's, even if that's an ordinance violation. So some of those numbers look a little bit differently. But again, that's a cross-comparison piece, and it's something that we do consistently in our, in our work. What you see here is an excerpt of, of data within the CAD system. What the original CAD data set had somewhere around, I think, 90-some thousand lines of data. We discovered that there were a lot of duplicates in that data coming out of the CAD system, and we had to remove those. And I want to just state, talk a little bit about what it took to get the CAD data. We worked for several months trying to get CAD data from MetCAD. One of the challenges is MetCAD doesn't typically pull this kind of data. They really don't have a methodology for pulling this data. And quite frankly, surprisingly, neither do the vendors. We oftentimes work with even third parties to extract data from data systems to get the kind of response data that we're looking at, looking for, coming out of CAD. This was, this was a, I will, I will thank Deputy Chief Searls for during that period, the many, many efforts were made to try to get the CAD data. Ultimately, after several months, they said, well, how about this? And apparently, they had a preset inquiry that someone else had created some time ago, and they were able to extract a certain amount of CAD data. Again, this, at this point, MetCAD lacks the ability to pull CAD data in the most appropriate way. And so that is one of the things going forward that's going to be really important, is to make sure that functionality becomes available as you're going to want to pull this CAD data with some regularity to continue to monitor things. Regardless, we took the CAD data and we, we, we looked at, we looked at what the data was and we started to filter the data out into different categories. And what you see here, originally, there were about 32,000 hours of data in total in the data set. Approximately 25,000 of those hours related to community-initiated activity. However, some of that data is non-call-for-service data. And what we mean by that is, if somebody dispatch puts out an extra patrol request, for example, that's not a specific obligated workload piece, even though it shows up in CAD as consuming time. Sometimes, there's information to officers. Follow-up is not considered obligated workload, even though sometimes that shows up in CAD. So part of our process, we strip out non-call-for-service data. And what you see here is an adjusted data total on the, in the blue bar on the bottom of about 19,762 hours, which is, that's your obligated workload, effectively, that your patrol officers are responding to within your, within this, this particular year. And again, let me just, I just want to point out again, real quickly here, that you can see that there's the community-initiated and then the officer-initiated. And you can see the number there is only 2,700 hours. And I'll come back to that, but just want to call that out. The other thing that we do, and I kind of talked about this, is that we split things into crime, service, and traffic. Within this data, we also look at motor vehicle crashes as a separate category. In this particular table, motor vehicle crashes are included, included in the service data category. There's some other tables within the report where we call that out and split that data out. But again, effectively here, as we peel, as we peel away the onion and we look at just patrol officers' responses to obligated workload, it's about 16,000 hours within this model. And again, this particular model shows the percentage of total calls, the percentage of service calls, and the percentage of time spent. These are not uncommon. Most organizations, most police organizations are service. They have a, they are slanted towards service delivery as the primary aspect of the work that they do. One of the things that's important is that we oftentimes think about, when we think about staffing, we think about staffing from 2,080 hours, because that's what everyone gets paid. The reality is, for police officers, what we really want to know is how many hours were you able to dedicate to actually driving a squad car on an annual basis? And the first thing that we do is we look at, we look at unit available, unit availability. And we asked the city to provide us with the average amount of leave time for people in patrol. So what you see here is, if you look at this total for Urbana Patrol Officers, on average, across all of those active police officers, they averaged about 1,719 hours of available time, which compares to about 1,697 hours from multiple other studies. In other words, Urbana is very, very similar to the other outputs that we've seen in other organizations. Again, the importance here is to recognize that we're not starting with a baseline of 2,080 hours. We're starting with a baseline for you of 1,719 hours. So that 30% that we talked about is not 30% of 2,080. It's 30% of 1,720. This is a table that indicates call volume by hour of the day. The blue bar, it's a bell curve, you can see. And this is showing when the calls for service come in. This is, this, these are annual totals. The light green bar is the officer-initiated activity. Your, your, the green bar here in this table is comparatively low against other projects that we've done. And when we see a low bar in the, in the percentage level that we see for your organization, typically, that's a result of low staffing counts or being understaffed. In your case, we know that the department has been working short. That certainly can be a contributor, but also overall work volumes can contribute. And, and again, typically, what we see is an increase in the green bar as officer volume, as call-for-service volume declines. And we really don't see a significant pattern of that here, most likely related to the fact that when your significant declines are occurring, it's, it's in the wee hours of the morning when there is simply not that many vehicles that are out and about, or other people that might be out doing suspicious activity, those kind of things. This is a quick look at your call-for-service volume by beat. Effectively, what you can see here is that the volume of activity across the, the city current, the police department currently uses five separate patrol beats. And currently, the volume across those beats is very similar, as is the officer-initiated activity. However, one of the things that is in question at this point is whether a five-beat structure is the most efficient or effective for your, for your community. And that is something that we're looking at as an additional piece of work with the city, examining where and when your calls are coming in to, to help the police department make an informed decision about its beat structure. Beat structure also relates to something we call geographic policing. Geographic policing is the idea that, that police officers are assigned to similar areas within their community on a consistent basis. It helps with building relationships, but it also helps with understanding what might be out of place. Geographic policing aligns with community-oriented policing and problem-oriented policing. And it's a mechanism to help, help organizations and help officers focus on specific areas of the community. One of the challenges in, for your police department is, and there's a similar challenge for the fire department, kind of a different category, but because your maximum staffing only allows you to do one person in each beat, and because a lot of police calls for service require a backup officer, that means we're vacating one of those beats and leaving it empty many, many times. So there are better, depending upon your staffing numbers, there are more effective ways to maintain geographic policing. And that's something that we'll be paying attention to as we go forward. Another thing I wanted to mention is that your, your backup, we look at primary units versus backup units. The primary unit, the way that we, the way that we learn who the primary unit is, typically, that's a field that's completed within the CAD data set. So when we get that from dispatch, they will say this was the primary unit assigned to this car, or to this call. We also look at whether that unit, what the unit assigned to the call responded to a call that was in their assigned area, which is where we look at in versus out-of-beat response. And again, there's a, there's a high volume of out-of-beat response for the very reasons that we talked about. If officer in Zone 1 is responding to a call in Zone 2, and now there's a call in Zone 1, someone from Zone 3 has to go to 1, and pretty soon, nobody's at home. So we see that kind of cascading effect that plays out. Your backup ratio, so you have a ratio of about 54% primary response and 45% backup response. That is in, it's within range of other organizations that we've looked at. And certainly, quite frankly, some organizations have a lower backup range because of availability of resources. And so if your, if the, if your department was fully staffed and those beats were fully staffed, you might actually see a slight increase in the number of backup responses, depending upon availability. This is a really important table because it, it reflects, it reflects the number of staff that are required, but it's by section of the day. And this is really important. If you look in this table, at the very top, you have a window from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And we can see that based on the annual volume, this is, this would require three officers strictly based on workload volume. That is, if we take all the numbers and we divide versus how many hours are available, it would suggest that you need three officers during that period. However, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, you need 10. Again, this is where the, if you remember the bell curve that I showed you before, this is where all that volume's occurring. And I think it's around 64%, give or take, that's occurring during that window. Again, then we get into the overnight from 23:00 to 07:00, or from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And again, that number is four. From a, from a staffing perspective, from a maintaining public safety, having enough staff on, on duty to manage the, the geography of the community, the volume that comes in to provide for officer safety and, and backup, and even to have enough people around when other officers are tied up at the jail or whatever. We can't look exclusively at the 3 number from 7:00 in the morning to 11:00 AM or overnight at the 4 number. Based on overlaps, there's a way to move those numbers. And ultimately, the number that, and again, some of those can be moved around. But regardless, it, it results in a need for 17 shifts on a total basis across the day. We have a shift relief factor. And what that means is, how many people does it take to staff one shift every day of the year? Because of your 1,719 hours that are available, if we look at your shift duration, we do the math, you need 2.55 officers to cover one shift 365 days per year. So if we take 17 officers or 17 responders, and we multiply that times 2.55, gives us 43.4, 43.35. We have not figured out how to make a .35 officer yet. So we round that up to 44. So that's the number that's reflected in our, in our recommendations. Again, the importance here is recognizing that it's not, all volume does not occur equally across the, the day. And you need to have enough people on during that midsection, that, that 64% section of volume to manage the workload. And by staggering the shifts in some fashion, you can accomplish that and also supplement overnight and day shift staffing as well. I want to just mention that one of the things that we've talked about is the, this, this number that you see here is, the 44 is the addition of 13 personnel. There's been some different comments that were made a little bit earlier, and I want to clarify a couple of things. We're recommending seven sworn police positions, so seven sworn officers. The CSRs are the Community Service Responders. Their, their name is used in, there's a number of different variations out there. But these are non-sworn, they're not police officers, they're non-sworn. They don't go through the police academy, it's not the same type of structure. This is a common response type that's used throughout the country. And the, the six CSRs that Barry Dunn is recommending within, within this report are, in part, to support alternative response. It's also important to understand that alternative response also means, is also an internal factor. It's aligning the right response with the right, with the right problem. We want to align the right resource with the right problem. It's, it's commonplace in the, in the work that Barry Dunn does that we look at the work that's being done within the police department, and we analyze, do we need to send a sworn officer to go to this activity at a cost of X when we could send someone else to manage this activity at a cost of, at a, at a much reduced cost? So as we think about alternative response, there are some internal types of things that go along with that. One is redirection of, of resources or of call-for-service types to, to internal personnel, again, which may be less expensive than hiring sworn officers. There's also online reporting, telephonic reporting. The other pieces of alternative response also circulate mostly from the sources that kind of are going around in the country right now, mostly from the mental health side, from the crisis response side. And certainly, the police department already has a presence in that. And there's additional conversation to be had about what that looks like going forward. But I just want to clarify that we're talking about the CSRs at this point. This is to manage certain volume that would not necessarily require a police officer. For example, blocking an intersection during a motor vehicle crash or waiting for a tow to arrive, or other minor things that don't require a licensed officer to be there, but certainly still require emergency equipment and certain expertise. So again, the, the recommendation from Barry Dunn is, particularly in this case, it's a question of balancing your workloads against your capacity. And effectively, what we're, what we're saying is that your capacity is not sufficient based on your workloads. However, you don't necessarily need to solve that simply by adding police officers to that equation. I'm going to delve just, just briefly into the, into investigations. And like, like patrol, we use a workload-based model for investigations. It's a little different model. We look at the types of cases. We look at how many cases are, are, are being managed. We look at the amount of time that they have available to look, to manage different cases. There is no, contrary to the patrol model that I talked about, and that being a national standard, there is standard, there is no national standard for investigation deployments. I can tell you, however, that, uh, I was, uh, a person who authored a national study, a national survey that went out to police investigators and supervisors a handful of years ago. Uh, to my knowledge, it's the one and only of its kind that sought and looked at workloads and caseloads from investigators across the country. Uh, we received a thousand responses, uh, to that survey, which for those of you that are, that work in the survey world, that's a big number, especially within, uh, especially within the, uh, the subsection of policing. Uh, the reason I tell you that is, it provided us with some things we sort of knew, but, uh, were validated by the data that, that was, that was returned. In, in your case, we have, um, we have a number, a certain number of detectives, and they have, uh, an annual number of cases. What we're seeing here is two-year average data, uh, and this is showing that an average number of cases per detective of three per month. Typically, uh, depending upon, uh, investigation case type, uh, for homicide investigations, for example, three to five cases would be common. In other cases, for property crimes, that number might be closer to 15 or 20. Uh, but commonly, we see on average somewhere between 12 to 15 cases is a typical caseload for investigators. It's a little more complicated in Urbana because you have had some, uh, more significant crimes, uh, that shootings and so forth, that require a certain investigative effort, which then reduces the ability of them to spend time on other types of offenses. Uh, one of the observations that we made and, and, um, we do see that, uh, on-scene time for your patrol officers is slightly elevated from other organizations. One of the reasons, uh, that we think that might be occurring is because we do know that Urbana patrol officers do a lot of their own follow-up work while they're on scene. So a call that might, uh, in a lot of organizations where officer might go out, take a call, there might even be backup involved, they would collect the preliminary information, leave the call, type a report, send it to investigations, the investigation would follow up later. Uh, for Urbana PD, uh, a lot of that follow-up, which actually would come into a different category, uh, is being managed, uh, in on-scene, uh, follow-up or preliminary investigation. What that means is that there's an opportunity, um, as, as the organization continues to go forward and grow, there's an opportunity to look at whether some of that investigative work might be shifted, uh, to the investigations division, uh, if they had additional capacity to, to absorb it. Um, so, uh, again, that's a, that's a piece. At this point, it's our assessment that there are sufficient investigators to manage the investigative workloads. Uh, again, it is, and it would be of some value to continue to look at from the police department's side, uh, whether there needs to be a shift in moving some of those, uh, investigative efforts over to, uh, the investigations, uh, general investigations bureau, as opposed to having that occur, uh, within patrol specifically. I wanted to mention just a couple of things on some notes I took. Um, there was a comment made about the number of officers in patrol. The number of officers allocated to patrol includes supervisors, which are not primary call-for-service responders. In other words, they're not the ones that are picking up the radio and going. Uh, that number's actually 31, if you include the K-9 officer, it's not 47, uh, even though that is the total number allocated to patrol. So when we talk about 44 as a number allocated to patrol, that's allocated to primary call-for-service response. Um, in other words, uh, a number of questions around technology, and I want to clarify a couple of things on that. One, um, one of the things we look at is field technology. What, what technologies do the police, does the police department have in the squad cars to be most efficient and effective in executing their work? Uh, the worksheet, the, the survey that someone mentioned has to do with that specifically, looking at what are the technologies that patrol officers are using in the field, and are they, uh, using the technology in the best way that is most efficient, uh, for the work they're doing? Um, and so that's one piece of it. Looking at other technology and data sharing and other things that were brought up, and even, uh, license plate readers, some of the other things, um, that's an entirely different conversation that, that circulates around, um, various crime, uh, crime fighting efforts. Uh, again, our focus was primarily on the, um, looking at field technology aspects, and then, of course, looking at certain operational aspects. And along those lines, I want to add, uh, just real quickly, and I didn't say this at the beginning, um, this project is somewhat finite and structured in terms of at least the staffing study portion. It's a staffing study, not a full operations and management study. Barry Dunn does full operations and management studies, which include other, uh, points of inquiry that were not included in this because of the way that the, that the work was structured. Uh, again, the main portion of this report has to do with understanding, do we have the right number of resources against the, against the workloads and demands that are being placed on us? Because of that work, we had to look at certain operational pieces to help inform, uh, the staffing, uh, unobligated workload numbers. Um, but I just want to be clear that there are some pieces of, uh, operations that we did not look in, and one of them is a broad technology review of all the different technologies the police department does, for example, or has at its disposal. Um, uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention, it relates to, um, there, the idea that, um, available time for officers equals traffic stops. Um, that's certainly one thing they could do with that time. But quite frankly, the, the point behind having, uh, available time or unobligated time for police officers is as much, if not more important, to dedicate to community-oriented policing and problem-oriented policing strategies, directed patrols, um, you know, data-driven approaches to crime and traffic safety. Um, uh, it's, it's more about those things than it is about executing a traffic stop. So certainly while, um, traffic stop numbers may be low for a variety of reasons, uh, and, and those certainly could increase with the inclusion of additional staff, that's really not the thrust of, uh, of unobligated time, although it does oftentimes, um, reflect as a significant portion of that work. Um, lastly, I want to just talk real briefly about, um, alternative response, and, uh, I do know that, uh, someone had mentioned cahoots. Uh, you may or may not know that, uh, Barry Dunn was the first organization in the 30-year existence of cahoots. We were the first and only organization to study them. Uh, about two years ago, we were commissioned by the city of Eugene to do an in-depth look at cahoots, and we did that, uh, in conjunction with looking at their full alternative response model across the entire city and all their departments. Um, there are pieces and parts, the model for cahoots is a solid model in a lot of ways. There's pieces of parts that will work in certain communities and pieces and parts that do not. Uh, but certainly that's part of the conversation that will advance as we step into the next phases of alternative response and looking at, uh, what's, uh, the best solution for your community. I'm going to step over to and to, oh, this is the staffing, this is the report, or the, um, just a summary slide for staffing. Again, you see there's the seven officers and the six, um, non-sworn personnel in the, uh, which would be the CSRs. Now, we're digging into the fire department. Again, um, we used some CAD data from them to look at, um, uh, certain workloads. Fire departments are different. We don't look at their time on scene, we don't look at the same kind of response mechanics that we do within the police world. Um, there, it's more about for, fire departments, more about standard of cover. Do we have fire apparatus in the right spaces, ready and able to respond to fire service calls, um, and, and be at the ready? Um, certainly, we look at volume and nature of calls, and we look at their availability, and we look at response times, but, uh, it's not a one-for-one kind of workload versus capacity, uh, kind of analysis. It, quite frankly, on the fire department's side, it's more about, uh, do we have the right number of resources in the right number of places to manage the volume and kind of stay in that, uh, within, um, those kind of geographic, uh, places that are established by the districts and where your fire apparatus are, um, disseminated. So similar to the police department, we looked at CAD data for the fire department, and you'll see here, this is a very, uh, a very interesting, um, figure, because what you see, the blue bar is the total, uh, volume of the fire department, uh, annual volume of the fire department, but the green bar is medical calls for service. Uh, and you can see very clearly that medical volume, uh, very much overwhelms the total amount of volume of work that the fire department does. The reality is that, and I want to be clear about a few things, um, there are certain medicals that the fire department does not go to. Obviously, there are, there's private ambulance companies that are contracted through the city to respond to EMS, but also the fire department responds to those as well. Um, however, uh, the fire department still responds and sends a full company, uh, full fire department unit apparatus, one of those big red trucks with people in it, to, to, um, any medical they go to, they send one of those units. Um, that results in wear and tear on those units, uh, it's effectively over-response in many cases, uh, and, and not necessary, and it oftentimes displaces those units and removes them from, uh, our service readiness, that's a very crucial part of, uh, fire service. Um, again, not, not unlike the police department, the largest volume here for the fire department is coming kind of in a 12-hour window between 7 AM and 7 PM. And you'll see, as we recommend in a little while, uh, about the rescue utility unit, um, we've, uh, particularly looked at, uh, that as a potential isolated, uh, time window, uh, as a, as a starting point for looking at that particular, um, service. This is another really, uh, interesting table because it shows, uh, in a very different way, all the medicals, which are the, the blue bar at the top, and everything else on the bottom. Um, and you can see that there's, uh, a very small number comparatively, and even as we split out those, uh, types of volume, um, you can see that those numbers are, are very low comparatively. And by the way, um, a lot of those things on the bottom tend to take the most time for fire units. So, um, medicals, while certainly, and to be clear, there are medicals where the fire department should be responding, right? Um, we think about those most life-threatening, most serious medicals. However, again, even though the fire department has done some work in trying to reduce that number, there's, there's an opportunity to, uh, to increase that work and to further, um, isolate types of, um, medical calls for service that don't require a fire response at all, and if they do require a fire response, is there another way for us to do that more There's a couple of, a couple of figures in here that, um, that we collected from your, um, city analytics folks, and, uh, this is one of them. Uh, I did not create this table, but, uh, as we looked at the data and we had conversations with those staff, we realized that we were looking at similar data, but they were looking at more longitudinal data, uh, and we thought it was, uh, reasonable to add this, uh, this table. In fact, you may have seen this, or this figure, you may have actually seen this one before. But what you can see here is that the medicals, which are the blue line, uh, far, um, by far are, oh, as we've shown, uh, and, and this has been over time. This is, this table goes from 2013 to 2023, and you can see that, uh, those other calls that we were showing before have stayed relatively constant while medicals continue to soar in terms of overall volume. This is another, uh, table that we kind of talked about, and this is, we call, uh, out-of-area response, uh, the city, um, staff call this, uh, overlap incident. But effectively what this is, is imagine that you have your four fire districts, your four fire stations, if the apparatus from fire station one goes to fire station two, that's an overlap incident or an out-of-area incident. Uh, like I described with the police department, when we start sending fire unit one down to fire, to district two and so forth, pretty soon, everybody's out of position. And in fact, the potential exists that you may have all of your fire apparatus in one corner of the community while you have other sections of the community that are effectively, uh, uncovered and, and don't have a unit available. Um, one of the things that we learned is that, uh, MetCAD implemented somewhat recently AVL or Automated Vehicle Locator, uh, Systems, that GPS-oriented dispatching. We have a call here, we can see by GPS that fire rig X is the closest, let's send them. And that's what they've been doing for about the last 18 months. What you see in the spike, the purple, the purple line that's showing a spike, is effectively the overlap incidents that have been occurring since AVL kind of went into play. The bottom line is, is that the use, first of all, um, again, Barry Dunn only looked at one year of data, uh, your, uh, city staff have looked at multiple years of data, but the bottom line is that the indiscriminate use of AVL, that is, dispatch, if they get a call, they use AVL. Uh, a lot of organizations that use AVL on the, on the police side or the fire side do so in a more, in a more, uh, discerning manner. We're only going to use AVL for a priority one or priority two types of calls, uh, or for calls in which there's going to be an elongated response time and we need to send someone. Uh, MetCAD does not do that currently. Um, instead, they use AVL basically for all fire service calls. And what that means is, uh, if I'm in, if I'm the district one unit and I'm in district two on a call, and I'm finishing up my call and another call comes out in district two, guess who's going to it? It might very well be that out-of-place unit. Uh, and again, for, for purposes of understanding, um, oh, um, standards of cover, it's preferred in the fire service that we keep those units, uh, closer to home, uh, with some regularity. One of the reasons that, um, that's important is the insurance services office does, um, they do an analysis of your fire department's readiness to manage fire incidents within your community, and their ratings ultimately affect homeowners' rates for everyone in your community. Uh, they have a very detailed system for doing so. Uh, this is an excerpt from a long report, um, and, but what I will, what's important here is that the number of engine companies, uh, in line 513, uh, they, you got all the maximum points on that. Um, the credit for deployment analysis, um, was a little bit low, and also, the company personnel was a little bit low. Um, the company personnel has to do with how many people are on each fire truck, and there are national standards for that. They're not, they're not, um, they're not etched in stone, not everyone necessarily subscribes to those. Uh, they, they come out of the National Fire Prevention Association, uh, but they are looked at as a bit of a litmus test for understanding, uh, how many, uh, staff should be dedicated to a particular fire apparatus for operation, and how many, um, fire personnel you need to manage a full-scale, um, uh, fire event. And by the way, there's a copy of this standard in the appendix of the report, uh, if you haven't, uh, haven't already seen that. But again, the, uh, the lowest, uh, reduction in this particular model has to do with line 571. You can see that there's, out of 15 points, uh, they only rated a 9.61. Ultimately, this is the, this is the final, uh, the final point, and you can see that, um, generally, the, where, where the city lost its most points has to do with that prior slide, the fire department piece, and, uh, you're about 7.95 points low in that particular area, most of which, uh, is a result of your fire department staffing and, and where those, what those numbers look like. Um, I mentioned the, I mentioned the, um, rescue utility unit before, uh, again, uh, to kind of, to put this into context, presently, you're sending large fire trucks to go to some relatively minor, uh, circumstances, or cases that really don't require us sending three or four, uh, qualified firefighters to go to a specific, uh, circumstance. Um, a lot of organizations use something similar to what we've recommended, they call it different things in other places, uh, but that, what we're suggesting is to implement the use of a rescue utility unit, uh, which effectively would be a single apparatus that would, uh, be routed to a lot of these calls and alleviate the need to send a full company of fire personnel to those, uh, uh, service types that, that just don't require it. What you see here is, similar to the police department's side, you see a shift relief factor here, uh, and effectively, if you were factor here, and effectively, if you were to implement a, a RUU for one shift for 12 hours every day, it would take six full-time personnel in order to manage that volume. I want to dig into, just kind of go through some, some recommendations, and I did want to mention, there was a couple of people that, that called out the fact that there were no critical recommendations within the report. That's a category that we typically use for things that are illegal, or for things that the, that the, that the agency needs to respond to immediately before the report is issued. In other words, we, as we're doing our, as we're doing our project work, we see something and we say, wow, you should not be doing that, or you absolutely need to be doing this. And in those cases, we will actually write something called an emergent issues memo that goes to the city that says, you need to act on this right now, you can't afford to wait three months or six months for the rest of this report to come out. I, I don't want anyone to mistake the fact that there's no critical pieces to say, there's nothing important. The criticality piece, that category, again, relates to those things that are so urgent that they need to be immediately repaired. And so the absence of that is a good thing. But again, and we did not find any of those either with the police department or the fire department. What you see here is, are the high-level recommendations from the report. And again, there's also some that are in the, the medium category. Number one, and again, these all have a recommendation number here so that you can reference them. And by the way, this PowerPoint has already been sent to the city, and I'm sure they'll circulate it to you if you don't, at some point. First recommendation is, again, we've talked about this, adding seven sworn positions and three non-sworn community service responder positions. The second one has to do with internal affairs investigations. One of the things that's really important is if you're going to do an internal affairs investigation, you should have training in that. For anybody that's been involved in HR, you can get in a lot of trouble if you ask the wrong questions or you do the wrong things. The same kind of thing can happen in, in an internal affairs investigation, and we see this from time to time with organizations that try to move certain low-level investigations to supervisors or other personnel, and our recommendation is, that's fine, but make sure they have internal affairs investigations training so that they don't step out of the bounds somewhere. So those are the two kind of high-level ones for the police department. Then we get into some fire department ones. The first one is getting into some new and updated vision statements and including a strategic plan. The fire, to be clear, the fire department has within its policies a philosophy and values, and those are important things. But for example, tonight, you talked about what you want to accomplish as a council. The fire, the fire department needs to do that same kind of process. Things that are in policy are kind of those unchanging, you know, cultural pieces that we want to adhere to, but we also need to have a roadmap that is kind of in, in an evolving fashion. So, that's what this recommendation is about. Fire department would benefit from getting into a process, developing a more strategic plan and setting goals and objectives for, you know, near and kind of midterm. As we mentioned, the MetCAD has effectively been using AVL indiscriminately, and this is something that really, it would, the, the system would benefit from some additional conversation and working with MetCAD and other county fire departments to talk about how to better align when AVL should be used and the circumstances that it should be used within. Other thing is, is that the department would benefit from having a policy on when they can waive AVL use. That is happening in an ad hoc basis currently, but it would be very helpful for there to be specific criteria and policy around this, empowering fire supervisors to deviate from strict AVL dispatching when, when appropriate. I mentioned the RUU, again, kind of going through that and figuring out what the best mechanism for deploying that is. I will tell you that, and this is in the report as well, we've had some conversation with city staff, there may be some alternative thoughts around how to deploy an RUU, and so certainly those conversations should continue and, and be considered as, as that recommendation is, is examined further. And then lastly, looking at, again, the fire department should take a hard look at all of the EMS kind of responses, ambulance-related responses that they're going to and ask, are these the things that we need to go to? And keep in mind that there are, dispatch uses certain protocols for when fire is sent to different things, some of those can be modified. It's hard to do that unless everybody agrees across the county, but there, again, there are opportunities for the fire department to set their own policies and protocols on those as well. And with that, talk a little bit about next steps here. Obviously, we're going to, we're, we have, we have finalized the essential call for service piece, and I mentioned I would talk about that before. What this looks like is looking at all the different call for service types that the police department goes to and whittling those down to look at which of these might be divertable in some fashion. And those diversions, again, could be in the form of non-sworn response, telephonic, online reporting, it could be additional resources that we haven't considered, it could be external resources, it could be a number of different processes. What, what's going to come out first is a description of that data as lo, along with some research that Barry Dunn has done on alternative models that are out there. And, and we have, again, looked at that, again, and updated that. That will be the, the next piece. Following that then is the conversation about, let's talk about how we build an alternative response plan, and what does this look like now, going forward? Who do we bring into those conversations? How do we hold those conversations? And how do we construct and consider what those other response types might, or what those other resources might look like, whether they're existing resources or resources that we may want to consider? For example, you already have, you already have the mental health response detective within the police department and in a co-response model, there may be an opportunity to expand that or to do, do some different things with that. We'll have those conversations, and then ultimately, we will, we will develop that into a written document and provide some dollars around what it looks like to do those pieces. And ultimately then, once, we'll also put into some structure, an implementation strategy for you, once, once there's an acceptance of that plan. So, that's a lot of talking. I'm done. I will just leave this up in the event that somebody wants me to go back to a different slide, but otherwise, I'm going to stop talking and I'll take any questions. There probably aren't any, but.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to keep talking, I think. I know you have lots of questions, we'll get right to them. I just wanted to, to publicly highlight, this is such a data-dense report, almost 300 pages, and it's just remarkable. And there's some people here who just went to extraordinary efforts to, to get you the data that you needed to look at. And Deputy Chief Rich Searls was just heroic efforts to work with RMS and CAD and MetCAD under the leadership of Chief Boone, Chief Dade, and his team, and Tarek, Tarek out there in the audience, Tarek is the data analyst magician who just, yeah, he's extremely great efforts there. And Carol Mitten in reviewing this report with a fine-tooth comb. So, it's been a, it's been a, it's been a citywide effort, and I just want to thank everybody.
I want to, as, as long as you're saying that, I do want to, to say that, you know, we go through these processes a lot of times and we get very little feedback from clients on the front end, and that was not the case here, which is a good thing. And, and you know who you are, who I'm talking about. But there was very thorough and robust feedback and questions about this report as we went through. And this, and again, this did not occur in a vacuum, this happened over and throughout the course of the report. So, this did undergo substantial review and conversation and explanation to, to folks along the way, and clarification in some areas where we had to make sure we had represented things properly. So, I, I really do thank, thank them for that. Ultimately, this is a better product for it, and, and so again, we appreciate that.
Well, one thing we're not lacking in Urbana is feedback, so you'll be getting it. Okay, we'll start this way for James.
Hi, thank you very much. That was a lot of talking, but that, it came with a lot of data, so it's very much appreciated. I have two quick things and two a little more substantial things. What I heard early on is that when you went through the data, the, the times that we ended up looking at, the totals actually had duplicates that you removed and types of, I think you mentioned, extra patrols that were removed. So what we're seeing here as totals are really distilled amounts, they're not, there's no fluff in them.
That's correct. This, this is really, the stuff that's not workload has been pulled out.
Okay. And then the other thing, I, I just wanted to call out, because there was a question about it earlier, was the place where I saw the use of additional technology discussed, one of the things I saw in there was an encouragement to have a community discussion, have an advisory discussion about the implementation of any additional technology, where the community can be a part of it to make sure it fits what we want to be able to do in Urbana. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you an example. We did some work in another community that was considering the use of flock cameras, if you've heard of them here. And certainly, people in, in different areas have had conversations about whether they think they're appropriate or not. It, it's not our position to weigh in on that, but to say, is that, is that a, is that, as an example, a tool you want to talk about? So as you, for the very reasons that were brought up, what do you, what, what is your community value and what do you want to, what things do you want to have available? And so, that conversation should really be a collaborative piece. I will tell you, one of the, one of the tenets within the 21st Century Policing Task Force Report that President Obama commissioned is a brief, little piece in the middle about co-production policing. And if you haven't, if you haven't seen it, it might be worth searching the document for that. But effectively, it says that the police should be co-producing public safety with the community as opposed to doing things to or for them. And so Barry Dunn takes a very collaborative approach to many, many, many pieces of public safety, and, and that means collaborating with the community in these kinds of conversations so that, again, there is transparency and the relevant data can be, can be expressed and people can make informed decisions, including governing bodies.
Okay. And it's a good thing you left this up, because I'd like you to roll it back to the display that had the average number of hours per year. I think there was a ta, a long, long, tall table that had that breakdown, because I want to ask a question about a particular thing I saw in there.
Uh, is this on the?
Yeah, this is the one. I, I noticed the comp used item, which was.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of cities.
High compared to the study average.
Yeah, a lot of cities convert holidays into comp.
Okay.
And so, it's, so it's not uncommon for us to see certain, instead of, instead of it being, you take that day off as a holiday, a lot of times they get converted into comp.
The thing on, the, the column on the left is us, and the column on the right is the comparison.
Yes, that's correct.
The norm list. So, so we have people who are using comp time in a much greater capacity than our peers.
Yes, however, it, it has, most likely has to do with how you structure the, your holiday time that's being taken off.
Okay, I was just curious.
Comp time typically, a lot of times, when we think of comp time, usually that means overtime converted into leave time.
That's what I was wondering if that was about, with, like, over, over saturating people to cover shifts because we have missing staff.
In your case, I, I'm quite certain that that amount is primarily related to holidays.
So people working on holidays, getting comp time and taking it later?
No, they, they, they get a, they get a holiday as, as leave time, right?
Okay. And then, okay, last thing, I'm, I was particularly interested in the AVL conversation, because first I had to look it up and understand what the heck it was. But in the area where you describe how MetCAD indiscriminately uses AVL, I think that's the term that you used, is that limited to Urbana, covering Urbana? Or did you see that that's also involving, we're proximate to, because we're, I mean, we're.
You're, you're not going to, you're not, they're not going to send.
Not a mutual aid thing, right?
No, they're not going to send an Urbana fire truck out of the fire service territory because they're closer. Now, they might for mutual aid.
The right side, right street, which divides the two cities, they're not going to say, oh, there's something on the left side of right street, we're going to use the Urbana truck.
Generally, that's not how AVL is used.
You didn't see that?
No.
Okay.
Well, I honestly.
That's one of the things I'm concerned about.
I, I don't think, I don't think that's the issue. And, and I will say, by the way, you know, in the report, we talk about this too, when you leave an area uncovered, like, if the fire department has a, has a major call and they send a lot of units there, they will call for another city to come in and stage in a part of the city so that they're covering. The reason they do that is so that someone's there just in case. But that doesn't, when you, the way that you're circulating your fire trucks right now, there's oftentimes periods where there isn't anybody in a particular area where there really probably should be a little more focus on that. So, but to your point, I don't, I don't think it's an issue of them responding out of their service territory for AVL.
Okay.
Once upon a time, right before AVL, we had a unit that was allocated to an area, and that's who got sent. AVL made it easier in some ways, but it's made it more complicated in other ways.
Sounds like it made it too easy, maybe. Well, and, I mean, there's a deeper question, we can talk about this later, which is, you know, different kinds of equipment in different stations, so that, that may play a part in it. But it's such a substantial number, I, I can't get it out of my head. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think, should we just go down the dais? Grace, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Michelle. I was wondering, maybe while we're on the tables here, could you go to table 2.60? I think it should be.
Have to find it.
Um, the one about, this one, yeah. So, trying to understand, so you're saying, like, for example, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, the calls for services require 10 officers, is that right?
From 11:00 AM till, yes.
And Barry Dunn recommends we have four.
The reason that we say four is that if you shift some of the officers from that 10, if you put some of them on the day shift, and then you put some of them on the evening shift, you will have 10 over that period.
Because are you talking about changing the time periods?
No, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that because, because the way your shifts work, if you have, if you have, if you have six on during the day, during your main day shift, and you put four in the middle, right, you're going to have 10. Follow me?
Yes, but not from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM when you need 10.
Yeah, you will. Yeah, because you have, you have six in the morning, they start at 7:00. I confused you. Let me, let me say this a different way. If you were to think about the, the numbers in the orange as being 12-hour shifts, the first set, there's six people that are going to work 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Yeah, so you're changing the time up at the top, it's changing on your suggestion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yep, because otherwise, that doesn't make sense. Okay, thank you. Other question was, I think a big picture one from a lot of the community, is how can Barry Dunn recommend more staffing at this point in phase one before looking at alternative models that might reduce some of that calls for service that are needing police requirement?
That's a good question. The first thing, the first thing I would say is, the, the volume that you have right now is much greater than your ability to respond to it, irrespective of the fact that you've been short personnel. So, you have a need to fill that gap, number one. The second thing is, is that the, again, as is typical in the work that we do, we oftentimes try to shift work to lower-cost resources when, when it doesn't require sworn officers to go there. The alternative response piece encompasses part of those CSRs because they're going to be able to respond to a lot of volume that otherwise currently police officers go to. So it's already a kind of a preemptive front-loading of alternative response personnel within your system. The other thing is, is that as you look at other, bringing in other resources, those other resources are generally not going to reduce obligated workload. They're going to come at an additional expense to you, but they're not typically, they typically don't reduce the workloads. the workloads, uh, oftentimes though they're co-response models or, uh, other models that are- and, and again, I know that some folks have thrown around, you know, things like cahoots and, and other, and other programs. You know, some of the data that has been attributed, um, to cahoots as being accurate, there are some challenges with some of that data and some of the things that they've espoused in terms of the percentage of volume. I, I can tell you that Eugene Police Department has an abundance of volume that cahoots doesn't respond to. So, the, the short answer to your question is, there are other pieces to the alternative response piece that are going to come in these next couple of sections. There's a need currently, uh, and, and, um, and we would argue a pressing need to, um, to add additional staff to, to balance current workloads and it's going to take you a long time to get there. And, uh, even, even if you approve things now, it's going to take a long time to get there. So, um, there's a, uh, part of the recommendation is, involves managing known obligated workload that we have to send cops to, and part of the recommendation involves a shift in those, um, types of service response that you could send alternative resources to.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think very premature until we explore the alternatives. I was wondering also, who set the goal of 30 to 40% unobligated time?
Well-
Where does that goal come from?
That's a national standard. Um, it's been used by the International Association of Chiefs of Police for a couple of decades. Uh, the Police Executive Research Forum, uh, or PERF, you may have heard of them. They do something similar. Uh, it's a little different. They use a 60/40 model. Effectively, they group the first two 30% that we do. Uh, we intentionally don't do that because it's very, very difficult to calculate the second bucket, but, yeah.
Thank you. And then my last one was, um, I didn't see specifically, I don't know if you could highlight any community input so far, if that's in the report or influenced in here in this phase yet?
Well, certainly, we, we had, uh, we did have meetings with the community. We talked about alternative response. And, um, what I would suggest is there's sections within the report that talk about, um, community feedback. And, uh, certainly there's more, uh, to do with that, particularly around alternative response. Um, and, and again, as I said, there's, those are additional phases yet to come.
Thank you.
Um, so you talked about this five-beat structure in geographic policing. Are you, when you were talking about adding, um, the more officers, are you adding more beats or adding more officers to beats, or is that up to, you know, internal operations? What is the recommendation?
Yeah, so we have not completed the beat analysis piece yet, but again, if you, if you think about it like this, if you, if you have five beats and you only have five officers to staff them per shift, you could see that very quickly, we're going to be pulling people from different beats pretty regularly. So, uh, even in the structure that you have here, um, that we're, that's up in this slide, um, there's, and again, these are conversations we still need to look at and look at the data. Um, we, we will do, uh, there's some additional pieces we're going to do relative to beat analysis, but, um, uh, one solution would be to reduce the number of beats, but to increase the number of people that are assigned to the beats so that, uh, people don't have to leave their designated area as frequently. So there's different ways to do that. There's, uh, you can use roving units. So you may have one or two officers assigned to a beat and then have one or two, kind of like the RUU that we're proposing for the fire department. You may have one or two officers that are not designated, uh, to the beats, or you might have a north officer and a south officer. So there's a number of different configurations. And certainly, uh, we haven't, we haven't formed all of that and ultimately that'll be an operations decision for the chief and his staff.
Thank you. Um, and then my other question was, with the CSRs, you're, you're recommending adding six. Now would that, would they also be, um, in the three shifts as well? Or do you see them operating more in the daytime or in that 11 to 11 time?
Yeah, that's a great question. And really, um, the vision here is you need the help in the middle of the day during that, during that, uh, 12-hour window. And, uh, quite frankly, that's when, uh, the types of calls that are going to be most appropriate for that kind of, um, non-sworn response are most prevalent.
Yeah, thank you for this information. I know there's a lot to process. I think a lot of us are still taking it all in, um, but I appreciate the presentation. I have a feeling you'll be getting some follow-up questions from us for, um, community feedback. I just want to go back to Grace's question to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So in terms of the staffing recommendations, you said it's based off of, you know, current, um, call volumes or the current volume, is that, I guess, how are you factoring in the recommendations for moving some of those responsibilities away from sworn officers if you're looking at that current volume? I feel like that's still not super clear to me.
So, you have a fixed volume of work currently. Uh, your fixed volume of work requires 44 personnel in patrol to manage. Um, the shift is taking a portion of that volume away from sworn officers and allocating it to less expensive resources in the form of community service responders. So, uh, effectively, we're saying X is your volume and Y is your capacity and you need 13 more personnel to, to balance those two. As you talk about, as, as the conversation progresses toward, uh, additional alternative response, the, it's unlikely that you're going to significantly reduce, um, obligated workload even through the additional things that, that come out of those types of additional resources, uh, which is why, um, our, our position is not premature to, to advance your budget based on the recommendations.
Yeah, that's clear. Um, trying to, trying to think of how best to frame my next question. Um, because some of this too, I think, you know, as we're looking at these pieces and we're coming up on budget season, right, is, you know, this is helpful, but it's also part of a larger, larger puzzle, right, of, you know, there are only so many resources. And this isn't exactly a question, I guess, it's just something that I, I think, you know, we've got, you know, so many of our officers here today, I think it's, it would be nice for them to be able to say, okay, this is what the plan is, you know, community members, same thing. But I, you know, I said this when a request for increased staffing came up before. I think it's also important for us to recognize that this is part of a larger discussion, right? Um, that the staffing recommendations are part of this project, um, which, you know, the mayor provided some context of where this was coming from. I will say for myself, as one of the people who initially secured funding for this project, um, when Councilmember Bishop and myself said, you know, we wanted better understanding, it was specifically around, um, alternate or co-responder models, um, that we were given an option that some of us did not feel like was well-supported as a response for this community. And I, I, I know this is a bit of a tangent, but I do think it's important for, for folks who are listening to understand this has expanded considerably farther and I think that's an opportunity for us to look at this more, more holistically. Um, but this really came out of a, a desire to say, okay, we're being presented a model for crisis response, which is a follow-up model. What are our other options? Um, and so I think that piece, you know, I hear what you're saying, right, of like, the, the workload is the workload. That work's going to be there, but I, I do think that for, for some of our community members, having the opportunity to continue to engage in that conversation is going to be important as we move forward. And I've forgotten my other question, so I will let someone else ask one and come back.
We'll come back. I do, um, want to ask for an extension of time till 11 o'clock. I think there's enough questions to fill that time.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Thank you. Chris?
Thanks for the presentation. Um, I guess this is a question for both Carol Mitten and you. I sent a lot of questions and I'm wondering, and you obviously couldn't get to them all. So I'm wondering if, is there going to be a point where you're going to be able to answer later other questions?
Uh, yes, there'll be a point later. So if you want to ask some of your que- any of your questions right now, but there, all of them will be answered. And I, and I think Michelle's going to arrange to come back also to continue the conversation.
Well, they don't have to be verbal. I mean, is there a way to, I mean, because some of them are just strictly like, I need a number or I need a, you know, okay.
Yeah, we can just circulate all of, we can answer those in writing and circulate them also.
Yeah, I sent out an email earlier today, um, because I know there's going to be a ton of questions, especially as you go through the, the report. So, um, if you're not getting your, if your questions aren't answered tonight, um, send them to Carol, she'll compile them, forward them to whoever can answer them. Some of them are numbers that the police department can answer, some that Michelle will answer, so. So, but they should go through Carol, so, so you're not bombarding Michelle.
It would be nice to get one list.
You'll get one list, yes.
That would be helpful.
It might be a very long list.
I understand.
Okay.
Right, I guess then I'll just, uh, do one question and, uh, give it to, over to Mary Alice. How many calls for service, on average, per 12-hour shift, do officers answer? Because I saw, I saw several numbers. One was a self-reported number. One was what they could manage. One was what the actual numerical number was from CAD. So could you, and I, maybe you can't do it now, but is there a number of, the average number of calls for service an officer goes to on a shift?
The answer is, we probably don't know. Um, one of the problems that you run into is, um, on any given day, you may have, you may have two less officers working than you should. We also know that base, if you look at this call for service distribution, um, officers that are working overnight from 11:00 to 6:00 or, you know, working that overnight shift, they're going to take, they're going to take a smaller number of calls on average. Uh, officers that are obviously working during that day shift or anyone that's working across that peak volume is going to take more on average. What we can, what we can say within the, and, which is in the report, is based on, based on the available time they have and how long it takes them to take a call, we can say, here's, here's what a manageable number is per shift, per officer to take. I don't have that number in front of me right now, but, um, but one of the challenges is, um, that as we start to, as we start to look at those averages, um, because calls aren't distributed equally even across the hours, it's just hard to say how many, uh, you may have, you may have, uh, well, it, it would be possible to calculate the average, but I, I'm not sure that it would necessarily be accurate in terms of what each, what officers are experiencing, if that makes any sense.
It's my turn. Um, one point that you haven't brought up, which I thought was really interesting, was a conversation about mutual aid. Um, so we operate in an area that has multiple police departments, sheriff departments here and so forth. And if I remember correctly, we actually send help out our neighbors, the equivalent of two FTE versus one that they give us. Is that right?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. I, it seems to me it was somewhere around 1,100 hours that y'all are, are doing to like 600 coming back or something like that.
Right, yeah.
And so effectively, um, and, and I will say this, that, you know, we had, we had a number of conversations about the CAD data. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the CAD data, um, but the whole mutual aid piece is complicated just because of the way that units are recorded in CAD. And so, and all that's to say that, based on, uh, and we've run that, we ran this a couple of different times to try to be sure of that number. But it does appear that you ha- that you do provide more mutual aid than what you receive.
And I, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that, um, the, the recommendations here in terms of staffing, the, some of the things that are getting mixed up is the alternative response. And so right now we have kind of two, I'm going to call them alternative response for lack of a better phrase right now. One is the CRS, CSRs is what we're calling them, right? Um, and then the other one is the RUU, the RUU, right? Okay, so you've got alternative response basically, or a segment for fire and one for police. And what I heard you say is that that CRS could potentially become the alternative response. But in this particular study, it is indicated for the activities that might not need a sworn officer. It's not necessarily the alternative.
That's a, that's a really good question. And in fact, I made a note on that and I forgot to mention it. The intent is not for the, for the CSRs to be your mental health responders. That, that, that is not the intent of it. CSRs are uniformed, non-sworn, um, and, and again, they're, again, these are used in police departments all over the country successfully. Uh, let me say it this way. When we talk about, in the context of alternative response, there's a couple of pieces to the puzzle. One of them is internal alternative response. What should we do differently internally right now? And so that's part of what we're talking about with the, with the CSRs and with the RUU. What should we do differently to do things more efficiently, more effectively internally? Then there's a whole other section about, what about this other stuff? That's, some of which maybe should be outsourced in whole or in part. Uh, and certainly the, the most common area that comes up is, uh, mental health and, and crisis response. That's, that's the most frequent, if you look at all the models that are out there nationally, that's the most common category that comes up. Um, and so, um, within the, um, there are various models out there in which we have embedded social workers. Uh, we have co-response, we have contracted response. So, that's kind of a, that's another piece of the puzzle yet to be explored as a part of this next section.
I think that some of the comments from today was concerned about having, one of the arguments was is that having that alternative response for mental health and so forth shouldn't be embedded in, in the police department. I just kind of want to make everybody clear that that's not what's in this particular part of the study.
The, there was a que- there was a comment made about the CSRs doing mental health response. That is not the purpose of those units. It's to, it's to go to those, uh, police, those types of things that require a police response, but not, not necessarily a police officer response.
All right. I, I will send more detailed questions, but those are the, the big ones I have. And I just want to say, I've done this type of work before. It's a huge lift, a really, really big one. So, thank you very much for all the details, all the data. I understand that not everybody is going to read this 250-page report, but if you have a question, I would look here in the, and see if you can find it first because there's a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there more questions?
I have a follow-up. Uh, Michelle, I, I thought we were trying to develop a, an alternative response because police officers were responding to mental health calls.
Well, um, again, this is a phased project.
Right.
The first phase was to look at your staffing, to look at your workloads against your capacities. That's what this is. And this is examining, uh, your current conditions. It's looking at various kind of service types that you have. Um, um, you do have trained, uh, mental health practitioners in your police department. Um, in fact, mental he- a lot of mental health practitioners would tell you that police officers are responding to more mental health patients daily than they see. But whether there, there are a lot of different models out there that suggest maybe there's a better way to do that. And, and there, and there have been a lot of those executed. So, um, this first section is not really intended to answer the question of how do we do our mental health response? That's a different piece of the puzzle.
Jay, and then Grace?
I remembered my question, which was prompted by Mary Alice's. So with the CSRs being, you know, separate from the conversation about alternate response, can, and this is a question I've heard from community members, can you talk a bit about why those positions should still be part of the police department then?
Well, because they're, they're going to go to motor vehicle crashes and they're going to need lights on their vehicles to block traffic. And, um, again, the, the types of, uh, and even in the survey that went out to the community, the question was, uh, about diverting, um, certain calls to non-sworn responders. Um, and, uh, you know, that data will be forthcoming, but, you know, there was a very positive response from the community and stakeholders about that. Um, there, the types of calls that you would, that you would shift to these resources are the kinds of calls that police inherently need to manage. Now, again, um, as we go through the, as we go through this next phase and start isolating some of the other call for service types that might be amenable to, um, to some other type of response, there may be an opportunity to, again, use an existing resource. I'll give you, I'll give you an, a, a- I'll give you, I'll give you a, a simple example. In my police department, we used to do vehicle unlocks, right? Person goes to the grocery store, locked their keys in the car, kind of a thing. We found out we were doing like 500 of these a year, and we said, we just can't do it anymore. And we said, we have, we've got a towing company and a locksmith right here that can do this kind of work. You might say as a city, well, gee, we know that's expensive, it can, you know, like, a lot of these companies charge a lot of money to do that. You could negotiate a fee, for example, with a towing company, or you could even, you could even allocate a certain amount of money as a, as a, as a stipend to help offset the cost of that. So, for example, if a towing company was going to charge $50, maybe the city pays $25 toward that. Is it worth $25, 500, 500 times a year for you rather than sending police officers to that, right? So, that's just one example of how we might reimagine taking a call that right now the police are going to and saying, I'm not even sure if we should go to this at all. So, there is a list of those types of calls that we need to have further conversation about, and what that looks like in terms of whether they can be outsourced in part or in whole, or in some other mechanism.
And so I guess my, the question I think boils down to, is this a serious recommendation based on just this first phase, or do you see that a city takes all of your phases as a comprehensive package before making major changes? And I guess a little context there is, you know, as we were talking about with the staff and the mental health, and I hear you say that you think it's unlikely to significantly reduce the workload, but we don't know yet until we've done it, you know, hypothetically, if most of our mental health and domestic violence calls could be diverted through an alternative model, I'd say that would be pretty significant, and I know you're looking at each phase at a time, but if you were seriously suggesting that we increase staff after just this first phase, that shoots us in the foot for later things. If we increase city spending by $2 million per year or more for the suggested increase in officers, that leaves no money left for an alternative model. So I think this is where we're hearing some of these questions about how does it make sense to do just this phase first, and I guess my question to you is, is that how you see it as sequential stages, or your recommendation now needs to be taken in context with the other phases in the full report once it's finished?
Well, as I've said, the, this is a, the, the recommendation is to balance your current obligated workloads. There's a lot of conversation around the other pieces that you're bringing up, those responses to some of those categories, even the ones that you mentioned, and there's significant disagreement about whether those should be done outside of the police department, particularly in the, in the cases of DV, for example. So, and I can tell you that in other models, even, even when there are mental health support units in other places, oftentimes, the police department is the primary or first responder, or gets called in to support those units. So, our experience has not been that it, that it's a significant reduction in overall workload volume. Certainly, some of that could occur, and I, I don't know if it was Councilmember Colletti that was talking about this, but, or who it was, but also, we're talking about, and you've highlighted this, this is a big fiscal note, and, you know, most of the time when we make recommendations of this kind, communities don't try to bite, they don't try to eat the whole apple in one sitting. So, the recommendations that we've provided to you are, we think they're sound, we think they're appropriate. Does that mean that you're going to be able to add all of those people in the next six months, 12 months? Probably not. So is it possible that some of those numbers could adjust as you go forward and as additional alternative response conversations occur? Certainly.
Any other comments or questions at this point? Could you just summarize next steps again, just so we all are on the same page?
Yeah, so just so you know, the alternative, or the Essential Call for Service Report is in process, hoping to have that done within the next couple of weeks, and what that's going to show is, here's our calls, here's, you know, which ones we think we absolutely need to go to, here's ones that might be divertable, here's some other possible resources, et cetera. Once, following that, the next section is going to be having some more conversations about, what do we do with this? What does this information tell us? What do we want to do next? What other conversations do we need to have to talk about what we want to pursue in terms of additional resources or shifted resources? And then ultimately, once, once that is kind of nailed down, and again, we will, we're going to, once we have an understanding of what those are, we'll, we'll provide you with some financial estimates that kind of show you what that would cost to do, and then we're going to bring that back, circulate that, have a conversation about what do you want to do, how do you want to do it, and we can help you construct an implementation plan to advance.
And again, in the meantime, any questions, please send them to Carol and she'll distribute them to the appropriate responders. And thanks to all the first responders who attended the meeting tonight, and for your help throughout this report. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.